We'll call the regular meeting of the Upsher County Commission Order. We'll begin with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time we'll have the reading of the minutes of the May 17, 2012 Upsher County Commission Meeting.
The county commission of Upsher County, West Virginia, held their regular meeting at the courthouse annex on Thursday, May 17, 2012, at 9:00 a.m. Donnie Tenny called the meeting to order. There were present Donnie Tenny Commissioner, Creed Pletcher Commissioner, J.C. Rafferty Commissioner, William Parker Administrator, and Jaclyn Dinklocker Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After reading of the minutes on motion by Creed Pletcher seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the regular meeting minutes of May 10, 2012 with the following correction addition. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty seconded by Creed Pletcher, the commission approved the resignation of Durinda Hall, E-911 Communications Center Dispatcher effective May 11, 2012. Micah Hitt Harris, Director of the Lewis Upsher Braxton Community Corrections and Day Report Center, appeared before the commission and provided an updated status report on funding issues and operations. Ms. Hitt Harris advised that the funding issue concerning Braxton County had been resolved. Ms. Hitt Harris provided a review of the Division of Justice and Community Services, West Virginia Community Corrections Grant Program Subcommittee Grantee Monitoring Report. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty seconded by Creed Pletcher, the commission approved the employment of 2012 Upsher County Park and Recreation Part-Time Seasonal Personnel at the pay rates listed. Director Rod C. Hunt, effective date of employment is May 14, 2012. Assistant Director William B. Squires, effective date of employment is May 14, 2012. Lifeguards John Allen, Ashley Barlow, Aaron Beer, Ethan Beer, Matthew Bellamy, Seth Blake, James Bloom III, Adam Bromley, George Clemm, Savannah Clemm, Richard D. Jones, Amy Lewis, Chase Long, Noah Lauter, Courtney Miller, Maggie Miller, Emily Nestor, Mackenzie Polling, Shannon Smith, Timothy Squires, Tyler Kenny, Jordan Thomas, Hannah Williams, Nicholas Williams, and Stephen Wilson. For concessions, admission, Jamie Blake, Amanda Brown, Kristen Costner, Lauren Specko, Emily Godwin, Samantha Gregory, Alina Griffin, Carly Hyer, Emily Miller, Danielle Stankas, Water Aerobics, April Pearson Keating. Effective date of employment for lifeguards, admission concession workers, and water aerobics instructors, May 17, 2012. Donnie Tenny reviewed correspondence from Jimmy Gionato, Director for the Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management Concerning Statewide Mutual Aid System. Item will be placed on next week's agenda. Virgil Miller, Upsher County Sheriff, and Debbie Thacker Wilfong, Upsher County Clerk, appeared before the commission to discuss the estate of Alice Summers deceased. The commission reviewed the following four information items. Number one, agendas and/or notice of meetings. The Upsher Buchanan Health Department, May 22, 2012. Number two, meetings, minutes, or and/or financial reports. There were none. Meetings, sports, and committees as listed. And number four, appointments needed or upcoming as listed. The commission approved all invoices for payment. The commission approved all vacation orders. The commission approved the following settlements as listed. With no further business on motion by J.C. Rafferty seconded by Creed Pletcher, the commission meeting is adjourned for 11:45 a.m.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as read? Not unasked for motion to be approved as such.
I'll make that motion second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, same sign. Motion carries. Is Mr. Anderson, have we heard from him, Willie, whether he's coming?
I'm not sure what time he's scheduled to be here. I'm not sure what time he'll, maybe closer to 9:30.
Okay, okay. Well, why don't we move on down through? We have several items for discussion and possible action approval. Since we don't have a timeline on it, why don't we move on down and do our proclamation now instead of making you all wait till we go through eight other issues? So if you'd like to come up.
Donnie, I have a few words I'd like to say.
You go right ahead.
All right.
You've got the mic.
We ask, we ask you all for these proclamations. We never tell you what for. So this morning I, I kinda wanted to let you know what this proclamation was all about and how it all began. It was the idea of Senator McCain in 1999. In 2004, after it went through legislature and Congress and all that, it was approved as National Appreciation Month for the veterans. These holidays include from May the 1st through June the 14th. And one of them, the first one is Loyalty Day, which is May 1st. Military Spouse Appreciation Day, which is the 11th of May. V.E. Day, Victory in Europe Day, which is the 8th of May. Armed Forces Day, the 19th of May. Memorial Day, the 30th, and then June the 14th, which is Flag Day. And that's six weeks of Armed Forces or Military Appreciation Week. It recognizes or intends to recognize those on active duty in all branches of the service, the National Guard and Reserves plus retirees, veterans, and all of their families. Well over 90 million Americans and more than 240 years of our nation's history. Let us celebrate them just as we celebrate the other important entities that make up this wonderful country of ours. One of the things that came out of all this was the lack of participation in schools in teaching patriotism. Some of you may know we were instrumental. We worked for the last three years with the Department of Education in, at the state with Dr. Marple. And the whole social studies curriculum, starting in 2012, will be revised to include patriotism in the subjects in all grades from preschool through 12th grade. So that's, that's some of the things. We don't want people to forget about the Great Wars. We don't want people to forget about the Revolutionary War. But in most cases, kids don't know anything about Normandy. They don't know anything about the Battle of the Bulge or anything else, you know, as far as back then. So that's what it's all about. We'll be back to you, we'll be back to you from time to time. And we may even come back asking for some assistance in recognizing and doing more in Upsher County than what we're doing now. We need to do more. We have a, he's not here this morning. This is a joint effort. It's a joint effort between the American Legion and the VFW. Larry Brown is the new commander for the VFW. Hopefully, we're going to be able to work together and get some good projects going and get some recognition out there for the veterans. But he's out this morning putting the flags on cemetery, out at Heather Cemetery. Which brings me to the last thing I want to say about this, is in years past, we do a memorial service at Hemlock, Mount Union, and Sunday we have a bridge dedication, and on Wednesday, we have Heather Cemetery Memorial Service. In the past few years, the attendance out there has been practically nil. You can count them on both hands, the people that are there. Getting speakers is a tough thing to do. We're going to ask you, you know, to, however we can do it, to get with the city council. And let's see if we can't do something in Upsher County. It's, it's our biggest cemetery, even though it belongs to the city of Buchanan. I mean, let's see if we can do something to improve this situation, at least on Memorial Day, for the citizens of Upsher County and those that's gone before. So that's, that's all I have to say.
Take away what you've said, granddaughter in high school, and I, being a history major in school, college, intense like of history as anyone knows me, I looked at her textbook, and I think World War II, for example, had maybe two paragraphs. And yet other things that, to my generation, to my thinking.
We can't forget those things. You know, the whole history's going to be lost, the whole, the whole reason, you know, why we, why we're here today is, is going to be gone.
Much truth to that adage that those who fail in history, in the past, you cannot, you have to learn from history, otherwise you'll repeat those mistakes and continually make them over again.
Thank you.
Who's going to read the proclamation?
I've drafted the proclamation. They just brought in a template, so we have the proclamation.
Well, I think, I think somebody should read it, like Mary, maybe. Do you want a copy of it to read, Mary?
I'll take with me.
You guys stand up there while Mary reads the proclamation.
There you go.
And then she can come up and we'll get a picture.
Whereas the freedom and security that citizens of the United States enjoy today are direct results of the bloodshed and continued diligence given by the United States Armed Forces over the history of our great nation, and whereas the sacrifices that such members of the United States Armed Forces and of the family members that support them have preserved the liberties that have enriched this nation, making it unique in the world community. And whereas the United States Congress in 2004 passed a resolution proclaiming May as National Military Appreciation Month, calling all Americans to remember those who gave their lives in defense of freedom and to honor the men and women of all of our armed services who have served and are now serving our country together with their families. And the months of May and June were selected for this display of patriotism because during these months, we celebrate Victory in Europe, V-Day. Military Spouse Day, Loyalty Day, Armed Forces Day/Week, National Day of Prayer, Memorial Day, Navy Day, Army Day, and Flag Day. Now therefore, we, the county commission of Upsher County, West Virginia, do hereby proclaim the period of 1 May through 14 June as a special time to show appreciation for our military and proclaim it as National Military Appreciation Month in the county of Upsher, and encourage all citizens to join us in showing our gratitude by the appropriate display of flags and ribbons during the designated period. In witness thereof, we have here and to set our hand and calls the seal of Upsher County to be affixed this 24th day of May, 2012.
We have a motion to approve the proclamation as read?
Same move.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. It's picture time, folks. Okay, while we're waiting for Mr. Anderson, we'll go ahead and take care of the rest of our items. First is approval of Stop Violence Against Women grant award of $30,000 for funding in the office of the prosecuting attorney. This is a continuation of a grant that we've had for a hundred years. Anything specific on that, Willie?
No, I do believe it's similar amounts we've received in the past. In addition, we've received notification, we've received the Victims of Crime, the VOCA grant, $35,175, but I do not have that grant agreement yet, but we received notification that we have received it.
Okay. So do we have a motion that we approve the award?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of bylaws and related documentation for Lewis Upsher Local Emergency Planning Commission. Are these changes in the bylaws?
Essentially, the bylaws are the same. Things got a little confusing. Apparently, back in 1999, the State Emergency Response Commission changed the format that they wanted bylaws in, but I think we neglected to tell everybody that they wanted that changed. So in the process of submitting one of our recent grants, they called and said, "Your bylaws are not in the format that we require," so they're reformatted.
And now they are.
So now, in the format that they required since 99 that they forgot to tell us about.
Okay.
So that's essentially all it is, is just reformatting. And the only thing that's actually changed is they wanted generic copies of different types of letters or public information items that we may have to send out. So there are copies of those documents in there that are not filled out, just blank documents, in case we have to make a public announcement or have to put a notice in the media. So that's, that's all that has changed.
Okay. Well, then, do we have a motion that we approve the bylaws and related documentation for the Lewis Upsher Local Emergency Planning Commission?
Same move.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next item is approval resignation from Amanda Craig for the James Currie Library and Park Advisory Board, on page 36. Amanda says it is with mixed emotion I write this letter. I've been honored to serve as a member of the Currie Library Board for the past two years. This year, my schedule has not allowed for me to actively participate in board meetings, and I have missed more than I have attended. I believe my position can be, can better be filled by another candidate that has more flexible schedule with fewer commitments. Please accept this resignation from the library board with my sincere support of the organization and its mission. Amanda Craig. So, do we have a motion that we approve the resignation of Amanda?
I'll make that motion. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, same sign. So what we need to try to do, we try to get someone from the school to be involved in the meetings at Currie because of the events of children, so we'll have to try to look and find someone else that maybe has a little more flexibility. But I think that's an important component of that board, to have input from the schools because when there's different events up there, it needs to be coordinated so we can get as many children there as possible. So we will work on that. And the next item is approval of application for donated leave for Micah Hitt Harris. May I elaborate on that, Mr. Parker?
The process, she's made a request for donated leave under our policy. She'll be using her other leaves in the near future and has made the request, and it requires the approval of the commission and before the process can go forward.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the application for the donated leave for Micah?
Same move.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, same sign. Motion carries. Authorize the Upsher County Park Pool Director to coordinate usage of the facility for long course practice. May I give us some background history on that?
You have a copy of the letter from the organization in your packet, and I've talked to Rod Hunt, our new park and pool director, and they've met with the representatives, the leaders of this group, and I think have worked out pretty much the times that they'll be available. But the director would also like the flexibility if there's times in the evening or on the weekends that is not in use where they could do that. So I told him I would present to the commission, just giving him the authorization to set the schedule. The routine, the normal schedule will be five or six days a week in the morning from 6:00 to 8:00 a.m., and then other times as available is the process, is what they're looking at.
Okay. Okay, well, I think he needs that flexibility in order to coordinate that, and that's part of, part of the job. So do we have a, a motion authorizing the pool director to coordinate this usage of the facility?
I'll make that motion. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, employment. Abigail B. Sayin', Sayin', C?
Sines.
Huh?
Sines.
Sines. Thank you, Ron. I asked my wife to help me pronounce that, but that's not the way she pronounces, so. So it's Sines, lifeguard, and Chris Armantraut in missions and concessions. Abigail at 875 per hour effective May 24th, and Chris, 725 effective May 24th. Do I have a motion to approve the employment of those two individuals?
Same move.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye. All in favor, same sign. Okay. Now, employment of Abigail Sines and Ian Pellerin as coaches for swim team during 2012 season, cost reimbursed. Do we have a motion to approve that employment?
I'll make that motion. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, same sign. Motion carries. And we've read our proclamation, and we're down to monitoring report for juvenile accountability And you can see this, the report of the onsite visits. It looks like everything is, is very positive. So that's where you're reading, pleasure. Correspondence from the Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management concerning the West Virginia Mutual Aid Agreement. This is a new mutual aid agreement that's, I assume the purpose of it is to help deliver emergency services faster if you have the agreement in place. From Mr. Jimmy Gionato, and it's an umbrella intrastate mutual aid agreement. It does not replace existing local mutual aid agreements. So they're asking, well, actually, this, this is in place unless we make a decision off too. Is that correct, Willie?
Yes.
So this is for our information, and it looks like it's something that could be very useful, so unless someone has reason to be in opposition, then it will, it will be in place. Any gentleman in agreement?
Aye.
Correspondence from the Office of Upsher County Sheriff regarding the state of Charles
Turning in, Clark's burger, a bit of remiss in providing to the father's, just necessary for the shaming appraisal. So he's just advising you, wants him to get a piece of shit up in time.
So he can get it done.
Gives him to do that.
Okay. Well, he's just keeping us informed, guys.
So we come to the subject of common, and we're just informing someone else.
Yes, that happens on occasion. And we have our Upsher County Sheriff's Financial Statement and General County Fund financial information. You want to elaborate on those, Mr. Parker?
Now, the, of course, it's the monthly for April of the sheriff's financial statement that you have on page 52. That just gives the outline of, or the balances of revenue and expenditures for that month, as well as the cash balance at the, at the end of the month in the various accounts. As it relates to general county, the gap between the revenues and expenditures is a little tight, tighter this year than it has been in the past year or two, so that's an indication that our carryover may be down compared to last year, depending on what the next couple of months come in at. So just, if that trend continues, our carryover will be down from, you know, last year probably. I think it'll still be above our estimate, what we estimated, but it was last year, if I remember, it was a 600 and some thousand carryover approximately, so maybe closer to 300,000 or 400,000, based on our projections, my projections right now.
And what would you equate that to? The closeness there of the two items?
Yeah, you know, some of the expenditures are up, some of the costs are up, so overall.
More in the cost than the revenue?
Yeah, the revenue is up, and as you can see compared to this year, the revenue's up slightly, approximately $30,000 of additional revenue between this time last year and the year before. It's almost, you know, the exact same, flat, so the revenue is staying flat. And if you look at the past three years, you know, a couple of years ago, expenditures were a little, about $6,100,000, and right now, they're $6,475 for this time. Last year at this time, they were $5,700,000.
I think we've done a lot of things this past year, too.
Yeah.
A lot of expenses.
So it, you know, some projects that we've been finishing up of extension office building and things that.
Pool.
Pool, I mean, and we have some more costs, you know, you know, I think most of the, most of the invoices for the pool are in, but, you know, we've had some capital type maintenance projects that are driving those costs up, as well as just costs going up.
Right. Just the cost of doing business increasing. And we have our home confinement report on page 56. Savings for the month of April is $40,650, 40 cents. So that's a good thing, that we can put folks on home confinement and let them pay instead of the taxpayers paying for them to be in jail. And we have agendas, notes of meetings, and minutes, and financial reports. And we're still waiting for our guests, so you gentlemen have anything else while we're Not, we will start on our paperwork, and then when Todd Anderson gets here, we will let him speak and visit a little bit.
I'm going to shut this off and wait a half hour. If he doesn't show up, I'm going.
There he is.
There he is. Well, there he is.
The timing was perfect. We finished all our business and.
Were you?
You, would you like to come up and say a few words and then?
I certainly can.
Okay, well, why don't you come right on up?
All right.
That way Dennis won't have to turn off his camera. Good morning.
Let me see if this works. Good morning. As maybe Commissioner Tenny had said, my name is Todd Anderson. I'm from Senator Manchin's office. The senator's doing what he calls common sense connections, and that's where we, as a state staff and some of the DC staff, come back to the state, and we hit all 55 counties in one week as a staff, not as one person. A lot of people say, "Wow, you can get all 55?" I've had some people ask me that, and I said, "No, not me personally." I've got eight that I cover. I've got eight that I cover, and Upshur being one of them, Upshur's also one of my areas, 'cause I am a regional coordinator for the senator. I do cover 18 counties for him, and Upshur being one of them, I've been with the commissioners a few times, a few different events, but I do have a little letter that the senator has written for these common sense connections, I'll read it, and then if anybody would like to speak with me personally after this, or would like to address me a question now, I'll be glad to try to answer that the best way I could. Senator Manchin has always believed in the power of open and accessible government. As a small business owner, he believes that elected officials should serve the people, provide outstanding consumer service, and offer an open line of communications with all of their constituents. That is why I'm here today, and why other staff members across Senator Manchin's office are crisscrossing the state meeting, meeting with folks. Today is part of Common Sense Connections, an initiative where Senator Manchin's staff members travel to you and bring government directly to you. This is the fourth time the senator has dispatched his staffers across the state, and every time, we hear excellent feedback from people of West Virginia that we bring directly to the senator. This is your government and your voice, so we need and truly want to hear from you. Senator Manchin is working hard in Washington to make a positive difference. Your common sense ideas, concerns, and priorities will help him set a positive agenda for West Virginia and America. I have comment cards with me today, and I encourage you to take one and fill it out here, or take it home and mail it in. On this card, you can write anything to the senator. If you have a cost-saving idea, then share it. If you have a question, then jot it down, and we will work hard to give you an answer. If you're concerned or have a problem with the federal government, we'll connect you with the right people to get help. Again, on behalf of Senator Manchin, thank you so much for your time, and I'm looking forward to speaking with each of you throughout my visit today. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions for Todd? Surely, you, these intellectuals, there's a question. Maybe they've already laughed, I'm sorry.
And I apologize, I thought the meeting started at 10, I thought.
Oh, that's fine, now you're good.
I thought, I thought being here at 9:30, I'd be perfect on time, so I do apologize for that.
We had time to take care of all of our business, and it worked out great.
I'd like to say a couple things, I've been to a couple of senators' meetings that we've had, we've been, you know, torn.
Yes, sir.
And I find that very refreshing, bringing him out, being face-to-face with the people, making him really accountable to the public, and all that, I'd love to see that go further down to the local level, for all the economic great lessons from the senator.
Well, we appreciate that, I know, as a governor, he was kinda the same way, in that, as I had mentioned, he does believe in retail government, because he was elected by the people, for the people, to serve West Virginia, and the only way he can know the way West Virginians are feeling is to get back in touch and get face-to-face, and I can, I can definitely tell you from firsthand experience, he likes it a lot better back here in West Virginia than he does up there, so, he tried to get back as much as possible.
See me after, we're off camera.
Okay.
So the three of them promise.
The promise.
That I can do, but, and we appreciate you coming out to the, the different events he's been at, too.
Well, we appreciate you coming and give our regards to the senator.
We will.
Tell him to keep, keep making him hold the line as much as possible.
He's trying to fight to fight the best he can, and, you know, he said, "Unfortunately, you know, up there, we got too many people worrying about the letter beside their name, instead of worrying about what's best for America," and he's trying to bring, bring people together across the aisle and, and do what's right for not only our state, but like I said, for America, and, you know, the one thing he's, he's always said is, he said he's an American first, a West Virginian second, and a Democrat third, and that's the way he'll always, he'll always think and vote, and that's the way he, you know, he'll do, do the best he can for America and West Virginia, so, thank you all.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we will start on our paperwork, and we'll take a little recess, and then we'll get to work.